Good afternoon, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council and Community Services District, the Energy Authority, Housing Authority, Joint Powers Finance Authority, Library, and Observatory, and Redevelopment Successor Agency Board. It is April 3, 2025. It is approximately 1:00 p.m., and I will ask the city clerk to call. Call the order, please.
Councilmember Downs?
I'm here.
Councilmember Fromberg-Edelstein?
Here.
Councilmember O'Keefe?
Here.
Mayor Protem Molado?
Here.
And Mayor Wile?
I am here, and if you'll be so kind as to join me in saluting our great country with a Pledge of Allegiance. Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I thank you. We now have several presentations, and the first on our list is an honor that I have to introduce our new lieutenant, Christopher Turnis. Lieutenant, if you would, please come up to the podium. We're delighted to see you. I don't have to tell you, Lieutenant, that the shoes that you have to fill are significant.
I don't know what size the tennis shoe was, but they're big shoes.
They are. Well, and I have no doubt that you will fill them well and fill them responsibly. We've been very blessed over the years with some wonderful leaders, and Lieutenant Espinosa did an outstanding job. He was a great public relations source for us, as well as most efficient, and we appreciate all that you do. We can't say enough about the Sheriff's Department or Cal Fire for that matter. So please, Lieutenant, tell us a little something about yourself.
All right. Well, I'll start off by saying good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff and guests. My name is Lieutenant Chris Turnis, and I serve as lieutenant for the city of Rancho Mirage. A little bit about me, I am married with two children. This June will be my 23rd year being married, and also this July will be my 23rd year working for the sheriff's office. During my times in the sheriff's office, I have worked a variety of assignments, jails, patrol stations, and my last stop, which was a Ben Clark Training Center. In 2023, I was promoted to my current rank as lieutenant and sent to the Palm Desert Station. Last month, on March 6, I was selected to work with this great city. I'm committed to ensuring the safety and well-being of our residents and our visitors. It's an honor to work alongside with the city of Rancho Mirage to address the public safety needs of this wonderful community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I'll be available after the meeting. If anybody has any questions, concerns, further information, I will stick around for the meeting.
Well, thank you, Lieutenant. I can't begin to tell you how pleased we are to have you here. We just feel very close to the Sheriff's Department, and as you know, I speak for the entire council that we're most responsive to your needs. Do any of my colleagues have anything that they would like to say at all?
Welcome, Lieutenant. Glad to have you with us.
Thank you. Very excited to be here. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Lieutenant, and we welcome you.
Thank you.
The next presentation is with Chez Warriors update, and that will be Eve Fromberg-Edelstein. Eve, if you would, handle that introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm really honored to speak today about an incredible organization that is dedicated to assisting cancer survivors. So imagine that you've been diagnosed with cancer. You are dealing with the fear of discovery of the disease, time spent discussing treatment options, outcomes, limitations, effects on your body, your family, and your psyche. You will undergo treatment that may include invasive extensive testing, meeting with multiple doctors in a large medical system, discussion with family and friends about the future, and what you will need to survive treatment, surgeries, scars, possible loss of parts of your body that will have permanent ramifications on your lifestyle forever. You will undergo reviews at the tumor board, experimental treatment, life expectancy conversations, the grueling task of completing chemotherapy or radiation or both, percentages of success, the worst pro-con evaluations imaginable, and the fear of leaving this earth before you're ready. You'll have the loss of hair, the exhaustion, the side effects, and the mental and physical toll that all that takes. You're given your outcome, possibly total cure or remission, permanent medications, and the ever-present risk that it can return. You are released from active care to monitoring scans and blood work for the rest of your life, and then the medical door shuts behind you, and you are left with just your thoughts and your scars. Now what? How do you live in your new reality, standing next to cancer for the rest of your life? Well, that's where Chez Warriors comes in, a nonprofit organization dedicated to helping cancer survivors learn to cope and thrive in a post-cancer reality. I have worked with Chez Warriors since its inception, and it is miraculous. And with that said, I'd like to invite Maddie Batello and Shay Moraga, pardon me, the founder and board president at Chez Warriors, Maddie is a board member, to explain more about this incredible charity. So ladies, will you come up to the podium? And I believe you have some updates and some presentations and videos to show us.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Eve, for that wonderful introduction, and thank you to all the council for your support and allowing us to be here today to give you a little bit more information about what we do and why we do it. We did a little presentation today so everyone can understand. We are a life-after-cancer community. My name is Shay Moraga, and I am a stage three triple-negative breast cancer survivor. I founded the organization after I realized that there was no help for the life-after-cancer process in our communities locally. And as you can see, we have, we're a little tongue-in-cheek. So we have the Bloomies, and we also have the Cactus, which is our male portion and our female portion of cancer survivorship. Next slide. Do I, oh, do I, do I have, oh, got it. Our mission is to inform, empower, and help heal cancer survivors and their families through health, fitness, and the mind-body connection. The mind-body connection is really the most important part of the life-after-cancer process. Our vision is that no cancer survivor should ever lack ongoing support from a community that understands and helps each other in the healing process. When we talk about community, we talk about all of our communities here in the desert, especially Rancho Mirage as well. Our purpose is we are a community of men and women that share the experiences and support each other over common, the trauma, the PTSD, and from the cancer, whether it's during treatment, after the diagnosis, but with those who truly understand. You heard about me from Eve, and I just told you a little bit about myself. I was diagnosed in 2016, right here locally, and I did, I fought for my life because I didn't know that my life would be extended. Triple-negative had at that time an 8% chance of living, so I had a 50/50% chance that my chemotherapy would work. The feelings of guilt and fear and loneliness and confusion came afterwards. I wasn't sure how to go back to my life that I knew prior to cancer, and I didn't know how to move forward. And that's when I started struggling to look for resources, services, and tools to help the anxiety. I was not the type of person to go to a therapist all the time. I needed something more. Our community is built, and it's life-changing, because life after cancer can be challenging. Survivors often feel isolated. We struggle with mental health issues and face profound sense of loss as we navigate through a new normal. Just some statistics, 60% of survivors feeling isolated post-treatment, that actually comes from cancer support community. Cancer survivors are actually two times more likely to experience mental health challenges. That's taken right from the National Cancer Institute. And here in the Coachella Valley alone, which was mind-blowing when we found out these numbers, is there are 42,749 people that are actually cancer survivors. Now, that's larger than the population of Palm Springs. So if you can understand that, we have a lot of great survivors here, so that means we have a lot more to do and a lot more to help. This is a little history about our organization. In 2016, it was started by a blog. I thought, if I'm going to die, because I really did believe that I was not going to be here, I was going to go out by saying exactly what was on my mind and be honest and open and truthful about how it felt to go through cancer, and also help educate my friends and family on how they could help me going forward, because at the time I had a 12-year-old daughter, and that was my one purpose to living. In 2017, I went into remission. I began writing locally, nationally, and started the social media for Chez. In 2018, I was introduced to Eve, and we decided with my co-founder, Eileen Alvarez, to start a nonprofit to help in the life-after-cancer process, because she herself went through cancer as well with two young children at home the first time. In 2019, we started building the awareness, the fundraising. In 2020 and 2021, as you know, that was COVID. It didn't stop us. We started a merchandise shop that helped fund all of the resources that we could bring Love Bombs of Hope to women during this time, and we did 25 the first year and 25 the second year. So people from all around the world helped us do that, and we were very grateful. In 2022, we did our first I Am Hope Retreat at the Ingleside Inn in Palm Springs. We did a full buyout, and 25 women got to come to that retreat and heal for three days and, three days and two nights at that time. 2023, we did our second in La Quinta. We started the Yo Bro, I'm Brave 2 Men's Support Group. And then in 2024, we did our third annual I Am Hope Retreat here in the city of Rancho Mirage, and proudly, we have partnered with them for the next three continuing years because of everything that they saw and loved, and our missions are very similar. So where do the sponsorships go? To our programs, to rebuilding lives, literally, we are helping, you are helping rebuild lives. We are lightening the hardship of the life-after-cancer that brings color back to hundreds of survivors every year. And when I say that, that we live hope in color, it's because if you go to a hospital, a lot of time those walls are white, and they're, you know, khaki in color. When cancer is done, you see the world differently. You hear the birds chirp a little louder. You see things more colorful, and hopefully you are also understanding that it is a community that thrives afterwards. Our monthly programs are both virtual and in person. We have a Talk, Listen, Share, which is our educational piece of the life-after-cancer, and sometimes during, we'd like to invite local community members that have businesses and then also on a national level. Our Coffee and Connection is both in-person and digital, virtual. That is our support mechanism. So not only do cancer survivors come, but their friends and their support people come as well, because we learn together versus learning apart. And that education and that learning experience is mind-boggling. It really is amazing. Our Move to Heal, I actually partner with Eisenhower's Lucy Curci Cancer Center right next door, and we do a monthly Move to Heal every single Monday of the month from 9:00 until 10:00, and cancer survivors are able to learn how to move differently, because again, you've lost some body parts, you might not be able to move or twist or turn as you once did. So it's not necessarily a yoga class, but it's infused yoga, Pilates, breath and movement. These are some of the faces behind the Coffee and Connections. These are some of the faces behind the Move to Heal. We love to go right back here and do the hike here in Rancho Mirage, so that's where that middle picture is at. Some of our fundraisers, which we're going to talk about too, is the Wally's Champagne High Tea, and that is in memory of Nicole, which is Maddie's mom. It is a pre-elegant Mother's Day celebration that honors the bond between mothers and daughters and the lineage of life. Every single proceed also is given to scholarship, the women that go to that retreat. Some of the fundraisers we've done in the valley and we've teamed up with, as you can see, we do a lot. And our annual experience is the I Am Hope Survivors Reset Retreat. Like I said, it's right here in the city of Rancho Mirage. We partnered with the Ritz-Carlton over the next three years, and that is a four-day, three-night, all-inclusive experience for cancer survivors. We aim to help everyone get clear on that life-after-cancer process and how to move forward in a safe and supportive community, building community. The photos kind of capture the joy, the emotions behind. We're lucky also in this bottom left-hand corner to also have one of our facilitators, which is Dr. Gail Parker. She's also here in our audience today, and just, we've been able to create this amazing community, and it speaks about, the transformative weekend speaks to mind-body connection, but also education on how to move forward, how to reset, how to do self-care, and a lot of people need that help. Our Yo Bro male experience meets every eight weeks in a safe space, and they also come to the Coffee and Connections and Move to Heal. That's some of the guys in there. So you know where most of our annual stuff comes from is 60,000K is raised through general donations, corporate sponsorships, and kind contributions. 84K of what we do is raised through direct sponsorships, and 46% of our funding is through grants, just like the ones that we get here, and we have 100% give with not only our board, but our volunteers as well. Every single volunteer, every single lady from even last year's I Am Hope Retreat gave their $100 deposit back so that it supplies it for the next lady's coming in. So far to date, we've served over 600 coffees and teas. We've done over 2,000-plus Move to Heals. We've done over 100 educational YouTube shows that are open to anyone. We have supported 165-plus women that have attended that retreat at no cost to them with your help, so thank you with that. And we do, again, we do our program sponsorships, we do our event sponsorships, and we take in-kind donations. This is the end of last year's retreat and all the ladies that got to come. And this is our board. As you can see, we're different than maybe most nonprofits. We like to make it fun, because after you're done with cancer, you got to live your life, right? So I have been on the phone since I was a wee little baby, and so that's my thing, and you can see, one of our ladies, she likes to travel, one likes plants, one loves cars, and then we also have our advisory team. We have two other gentlemen that have since joined us since then, but this is the gist of everybody. And then this is my co-founder, Eileen Alvarez. She is in our hearts forever. She earned her angel wings on October 11 of this past year, and she was the heart of our organization and always will be. And so I think it's very important that we keep that with us forever, because her spirit lives on in those that we help day-to-day and also in her daughters, that this will be some of their legacy as well. And that's it for what our impact report was. I do have two videos that I would like to show you very quickly. They're about a minute apiece, so that gives you a little information. Maddie?
We just want to thank the city of Rancho Mirage for everything and the sponsorship. So today, I'm here to talk about the tea. We could play the video as I speak, so you can see the photos of the I Am Hope Survivors Reset Retreat, because this is really the impact that you have. And this is from the Ritz-Carlton, where we did last year, and the tea that we host is in May, on May 10, Saturday, at Wally's Desert Turtle in Rancho Mirage. I started this tea because I wanted to get involved with Chez Warriors. I thought it would be a great way to bring people together. My mother passed away from cancer, but she went and seeked retreats all over the country and tried to find that purpose after she was in remission for 10 years. And when I heard about Chez's mission, I knew I had to be involved, and that was the first introduction to Chez. So we did the retreat, and this will be our third annual retreat. We are also going to be honoring Eileen as well. So that's May 10 at Wally's. Come and enjoy high tea, and also thank you so much to the city for participating and being a sponsor, because truly, your dollars are helping so many men and women do, just live life and find a new passion in their life. So it's very, very important, and we are so grateful for the support. And Isaiah, thank you for taking our meeting, because we talked your ear off, but we are very appreciative. Thank you.
So Eileen and I grew up together. I went to college with Eileen. I had known her for 30 years, watched her go through her first battle and then her second battle with cancer. You never say you lose the battle, because if you fight, you win, but, and she gave it everything she had. I'm very close, I'm godmother to both of her daughters, and we were in each other's weddings. It goes back a long, long way. So I'm just so honored to, and I know your mother really well, we did a luncheon together at Wally's. I worked with your mother for years on that, and I loved her, and to honor those two women on May 10th means everything to me. I'm bringing my mother and sister to that tea. And then obviously, the retreat, and what's really valuable about the retreat is if you have a survivor in your life and you'd like to sponsor them for the retreat, there are applications open on the Chez Warrior website, so you can nominate somebody to go. I have nominated friends in the past. I have a nominee in for my cousin this year. And I know from friends that have gone, it changed their lives. It changed, completely changed their outlook on how to live post-cancer treatment and diagnosis. So I applaud this work, and I love that the city of Rancho Mirage is partnering with Chez Warrior on a long-term basis to keep this here, and it's the most beautiful place to heal, so I can't imagine it being anywhere else. So thank you, ladies, for showing up today.
Thank you.
And excited for all the programming to come.
Me too. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have a very special reason for supporting the city's support for Chez Warriors through our Special Assistance Program. It's because I know what it's like when your doctor looks you in the eye and says you have cancer. That will kind of ruin your day. It's happened to me twice, and I'm a survivor twice, so I'm delighted that the city supports your organization. Thanks for being here today. Thank you, Eve. Thank you, Maddie, and thank you, Shay, for all you do. Thanks very much.
We'll send Steve to Yo Bro.
I too, by the way. I'm one of those 42,000 people in the valley that is a cancer survivor, so I can relate very much to what you're doing. So thank you for the good work.
Two Yo Bows.
All right, that's, that's great. The next presentation will be regarding the Ophelia Project, and that's going to be an update by our Mayor Protem, Lynn Molado. Lynn, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 18, the Ophelia Project hosted its annual scholarship awards, followed by a celebration luncheon at Weston Mission Hills Resort, and thank you so much for the invitation to join you on that day. It was a very special day. There wasn't a dry eye in the awards ceremony. It was just spectacular. The Ophelia Project's mission is empowering young teens to increase their sense of self-worth and maximize their potential contribution to society. It provides hope, health, and opportunity to girls in need to transform their lives through education, mentoring, leadership, and life skills needed to break the generational cycle of poverty. It was launched in 2002 with just 13 girls in one school. There are now more than 5,000 Ophelia girls, all of whom graduated high school on time with college and/or career plans. I don't want to go into too much detail, because we have the experts here. So I'd like to introduce Kippe Laflame from, she's the Director of Engagement, and with her, our Rancho Mirage High School counselor Claudia Garcia, Rancho Mirage High School Student Scholarship winner and American Express Scholarship winner, Deannaara Diaz Fernandez, and mentors, including Dr. Paula Kenny. Thank you, ladies, for being here today.
Well, before we watch the video, the beautiful video that the city created for us, you know, I think awareness is still probably one of our biggest issues, and when we have city councils that go out of their way to do something for the little guy in the valley, yay, yay, yay. So we have a few statistics for you. The city of Rancho Mirage has been supporting JFK Memorial Foundation since 2003. So we thank you. We thank you. We thank you for all of those years of support and look forward to the future. I hope that after we have a look at the video, maybe Deannaara can come up and say a few words of thanks herself, if that's okay with you. Okay.
You know, it's pretty important we talk about support.
I wrote that being in Ophelia today made me hopeful for my future.
Hello, I am Peter Sturgeon. I am the president and CEO of the John F. Kennedy Memorial Foundation, and we oversee the Ophelia Project. The Ophelia Project, I believe, is a very simple but impactful program. We put together mentors with vulnerable adolescent girls, and through being together with them and saying, I see you, I'm behind you, I'm with you, it literally changes the trajectory of these adolescent girls.
Hi, my name is Deannaara Diaz Fernandez, and I'm a senior at Rancho Mirage High School. I've been a part of this project for about three years. I've learned how I feel within myself and what it takes to be a woman, honestly, and like how you, how your vibrancy from within like does come out.
I am Dr. Paula Kenny with Ophelia Project. This is my third year with Ophelia, and I'm so committed to working with these young women and see them blossom. I want our young women to take away a feeling that they can be, do anything they want.
My goal ultimately is to go to a university for nursing, Channel Island, and then after that, I plan to become a travel nurse, and then after that, I plan to go back to school, get my master's, to become a nurse practitioner in pediatrics.
Over the 26 years that we've been in existence, we've had close to 7,000 girls go through our program. The number one thing that we're most proud of is that we have 100% high school graduation rate.
What's next for the Ophelia Project is that we will continue to do what we're doing and hopefully even serve more students in the Coachella Valley.
We really count on all of our cities to help us, and Rancho Mirage has been very, very generous to support the program. We're always looking for new mentors. We're always looking for support. To learn more about the Ophelia Project, please go to our website.
Thank you so much. Like you have brought like such a big blessing into like so many young women's lives. Ophelia is the most welcoming thing in the world. It's the best thing you could join. I'm forever going to be an Ophelia girl, and I'm beyond grateful for that.
So it's my great pleasure to introduce Deannaara Diaz Fernandez. She is an ambassador, and the Ambassador Program is a leadership program that we have with the Ophelia Girls. There are 40 very special girls that are taken in hand and are taught leadership skills, and these are the girls that support us in community events.
Thank you. So just being part of Ophelia has, while I first started Ophelia, I was, I'm a completely different person than when I started. I was the, I'm, honestly, I'm truly grateful for my counselor, Ms. Garcia, for even showing me this, because I cried all the time at school. I didn't really see a future for myself. I had a lot of self-doubt, and I feel like just joining it was so warm and welcoming.
And I feel like just joining it was so warm and welcoming. Having the mentors that I have and showing me like, there is a way, and you do have a future. You're, you're strong, you're vibrant, like you have a beauty within yourself, and like you're able to show like your confidence and your bravery, just like really means everything to me. And being with all the girls that I'm with, like my younger sister, I have five sisters and one brother, and we're all like pretty, we're all stairs, we're all a year and a couple months apart. So in a way, it's sometimes hard to get like, oh, like you're doing great, or like it's sometimes hard to talk to somebody. And just like going to Ophelia and their girls like that are, you're great, you're able to talk to them, you're able to relate. And I got one of my younger sisters to do it and be in it. And I had never, the way she talks and the way she explains like what certain leadership qualities mean to her, like I've never seen that side of her. So it genuinely just opens you up, like regardless of who you're with or who you're around. And you're able, like the last day of Ophelia, like I know I'm just going to cry because honestly, I woke up on Tuesday and I was like so happy, and I was like, oh my goodness, like today's going to be a great day. And I like remembered, Ophelia is today, and then I was like 10 times more happy. So my body just naturally already knows, like the day Ophelia comes, like I'm, I'm already going to be on my top-tier best mood. So, thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
Just one last thing, I'd like to, for you to meet all of your Rancho Mirage High School mentors, if they would please stand. Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you for being here. It's a wonderful cause. We certainly enjoyed the presentation at the hotel. And as the Mayor Pro Tem said, there probably wasn't a dry eye in the place. It was, it was most moving. So thank you so very much.
I have two friends, Maria Bradfield, who is my mentor in real estate. When I decided my third career, that I'd be a Realtor, and she's just a gem. And then Andre Jessup, who's a mentor in Palm Desert. I also have, I know of four or five mentors over at Sunline Bus Transportation Company who are also members, and mentors, excuse me. And they think it's the thrill of their life to interact with these talented young ladies. So congratulations to all of you and continued success, and we'll be here to support you every step of the way.
And if I may, so I've been, I've known about Ophelia for a long time. And if there is a nonprofit, you could say the little engine that could, it's Ophelia. Ophelia has fought hard for all of its accolades and achievements. It started in the East Coast, and then it was opened out here in the West Coast by Susan Francis. This Ophelia Project is the only one left, and it makes enormous change in all three school districts. It is changing the lives of girls. The luncheon was unbelievable. We learned how to breathe. Four in, eight out, seven got it, did it all. We felt the girl power that day. I'd also like to acknowledge that Ophelia Project was picked as the Amex Charity of the Year for the PGA. So every PGA tournament, Ophelia gets a present, which is really nice and really great national acknowledgement. But the proof's in the pudding. These girls are unbelievable. They are the future. And I am so glad that we support and we help Ophelia because it's changing the face of this valley.
And again, thank you so much. That concludes our presentations, and we will now go to the non-agenda public comments. This will be an opportunity for the public to speak on any issues not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. I will advise you, if you're approaching three minutes, to please conclude your comments. With that, may we call on the first speaker if there is one.
Of course. The first speaker is Patrick Lowry.
Twenty-year resident of Rancho Mirage. Let's be blunt and frank, I've got the wrong audience here. Because I do want to be critical of this council. But listening to these remarkable stories is so wonderfully encouraging, makes me so happy. Glad you're a survivor, glad you're a survivor. I lost my mother to cancer. My sister-in-law just had a double mastectomy. The mother of our godchild just had a double mastectomy two years ago. Okay? It frightens me. Just to have a bit of fun, though, I've had enough marriages that I finally ended up with the right person, and all I do is worry. So to say to you, the courage of survivors is so, so silly. But I must tell you, I suffer every day worrying about cancer. And should there be a heaven, God's got a lot of explaining, because I don't get this disease. I don't get it at all. Now, what I want to talk to you about in the future, we're going to talk about crime, and we're having a problem with crime. Glad to see the new lieutenant. We've got the worst rate for burglaries in the valley. One in 25 are the worst. Yet we pay the highest per capita for pleasing. I encourage you to take a look at what's going on. Now again, I'm going to leave it there because this was inspiring. And women in developing, being mentored to, remarkable. I've got a powerful wife, powerful mother. My wife's one of those persons who gets published in Harvard Business Journal. Guys, I know what this is all about. I've been hit in the back, I've had so many times, of being a bad guy for my mom and my wife. The message is clear to me. Support young people. Support women. And this cancer thing, keep giving. Keep giving. Anyway, thank you for your time. Next time you see me, you won't like me. I say that in the most pleasant way. My criticism is fair and honest. Thank you.
The next speaker is Susan Ragsdale.
I was here a month ago, and I was, there was a plan to forcibly remove me by the sheriff, and I don't think that was a great idea, really. It's actually illegal. I didn't try to resist anything. A conversation was started with me, but that's not important. None of you know me, and most of you, I guess, have the opinion of me that isn't very pleasant. I mean, I'm treated like a criminal, and I have been since 2018, when I was mistakenly confused as one of the In-N-Out Burger protesters, when I really only had a concern about healthful, unshielded bright lights in the city. And it was something, I'm very into the natural life. In fact, when I was 28, and I think it was 1980, I can't remember, but I got cervical, the very beginning of cervical cancer, I'm only mentioning this because of the people here. Fortunately, I lived on the West Side, and there was plenty of information about the macrobiotic diet, which is a traditional Japanese diet. And I immediately went on it, and I have never had any problems, and I never had any treatment, and it saved my life. I just want to say, it's a whole food, plant-based diet primarily. I also want to introduce you to myself, because you don't know me. You think of me in this exact same way that the bullies at Whispering Waters do, and everybody else in my life absolutely adores me. And the reason is because, I know this sounds strange, but since I was a little child, I am madly in love with God. I am totally devoted to God. I'm not like a phony in any way about it. I'm just, I was born this way. That's why I gave you the prayer, the peace prayer, because my grandmother was a Sunday school teacher, and she taught it to me. And I live my life by that credo. So I wanted to share that with you. You have totally made a mistake about who I am, totally. I am the most loving person on the planet, and I got scapegoated by the property management because there was an out-of-control hostile environment harassment and lots of bullies who victimized me. And they victimized me because I'm meek. I don't fight back. I'm never angry. I run away. I pick flowers. I go to the store and buy flower bouquets for them to try and make them treat me better. My family, okay, this is my prized possession. I am an old Californian. My family came, the Ragsdales and Aharts came to California in 1851, and they made a beautiful life for themselves. And I am their descendant, and I am so pleased with it. When I lived, I'm going to run out of time, but when I lived at Whispering Waters, I worked on extending this information. That's what I spent my time. I just want to show you, I am starting, we support Susan and the integrity of the Rancho Mirage Housing Authority in affordable housing management. This is Bullies at Whispering Waters, Rancho Mirage Housing. This is a, I know, I know I'm supposed to stop. Okay, I gotta go, but I made copies of this poster for everybody. And I want you to think about, I'm going to make a brochure, and I'm going to go to Ritz Carlton and all that, you know what I mean? I don't, I need support, and also, they need to know the truth. It's not a good situation. Needs to be investigated, seriously. I have enough proof, for sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Wally Melendez?
Imagine how much damage and harm Trump and Musk and Vance are doing to our country. All the damage they're doing, some experts say, will take 10, 20 years to correct and get back to normal. I can tell you that all this stuff that's being done against our country is Putin's agenda, Russia's agenda. Don't look surprised, because you know that's true. And you know another thing that's true. Putin of Russia, the bloody dictator, is the richest man in the world. Some of you may be millionaires, but you're nothing to that kind, to Putin of Russia. It's called an oligarchy. It's called an oligarchy. Where the richest people control the government, it's called an oligarchy. And they're doing a big mess. They're messing up our military. They're messing up the Department of Defense of the United States. So get ready. Get ready for war. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Brad Anderson?
Thank you, Brad Anderson, City Rancher. I'll wait for these guys. Anyway, I just wanted to hit a couple of highlights while I'm here. One of them being, I noticed that the new agenda is printed, or the new formatted agenda with numbers, everything, and subcategories, everything, in a proper fashion, which is good. It's awesome. You're finally getting rid of the time, so I appreciate that. Hopefully, you can mention that in a minute when you do that, that you made that adjustment. Other than that, I really don't want to bother you. I have written, submitted written comments or statements for most everything I'm going to speak on today, so hopefully, people can look at that on the, on the city's website when they, if they want to. I just wanted to mention one of the previous speakers, because you, at the last meeting that you spoke at, you did, she was escorted out of here, and there's really no call for that. I did write the city council an email, and I did submit that in the public record, but if anybody wants it, I would gladly freely share that with them. I don't want to live in a city where elderly ladies or elderly women, elderly anybody is picked on. Picked on is probably a nice way to put it. But that type of extreme measure is unacceptable, and hopefully, it won't happen again. Thank you.
That was the last speaker card. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on something not on today's agenda? That was the last speaker.
That concludes our non-agenda public comments.
Mayor, if I could interrupt for a second? We do have a request to speak on item number four on the agenda, which is what we're headed into next. So if the city clerk would call that speaker card, please.
Brad Anderson?
Thank you again, Brad Anderson, City Rancher. I would like to, I did submit written statements briefly about this subject, because this is the council comments, and I can't really comment publicly on that, because I have no idea of what you're going to speak about. So I would hopefully suggest that maybe I can speak after you speak, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? That was the only speaker.
We will now go to council member comments. I will start on my left with Councilmember Eve Fromberg-Adelstein.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much today, just small. I saw something really interesting, and I wanted to spread the word, because I thought it was a fantastic resource. There is the 988 mental health helpline, similar to 911, but it's specifically around mental health concern, created as a joint effort between Southern California United Way and the Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health. The helpline is designed to help someone find someone else to listen to their problems who's a mental health care facilitator, collaborate on possible solutions, and dispatch a crisis intervention team to their locations, day or night. In addition to the mobile crisis teams, RUH SBH offers 24-hour mental health urgent care clinics, the Take My Hand Live Peer Chat Line, free therapy, support, and referrals, residential treatment facilities, and specialty programs to high-risk groups. This helpline truly creates a crisis continuum of care that is based on the model of someone to call, somewhere to go, and someone to go to you. This can also help family members of mentally ill people find a place to take a family member or a friend in a mental health crisis that would be much more suitable to get them care other than a trip to the ER where a lot of people end up. But if the hospital doesn't have a mental health facility, a lot of times, there is nothing they can offer that person. This would help somebody who was assisting someone in a crisis to get them to the right place, to get them help immediately, which I think, in the light of a post-COVID world, is drastically important for the residents of this county. And I just want to applaud Riverside County and the United Way for this effort and giving this resource out, and I wanted to make sure people knew about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Councilmember Michael O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to welcome Lieutenant Turnus. Nice to have you with us. And I want to thank Shea and Maddie and Eve for coming today. It's very inspirational. And to Lynn and the Ophelia Project, that was quite a moving presentation. I'd also like to offer my condolences to Rose Eizer and her I'd also like to offer my condolences to Rose Ezer and her family. Commissioner Steve Ezer was a kind and smart and generous person who will be greatly missed here. And I will give you just a few dates that I'd like for you to circle on your calendar coming up. First, there is the, if we could have the slide, please? The Find Food Bank Telethon is tomorrow night, beginning at 7:00 PM on KESQ. I'm going to be there answering phones on behalf of the city. I hope that you will call in and make a donation. As you may have read, there are federal cuts to the food banks. Over 360,000 pounds of meat and chicken and produce have been cut from Find immediately, so your help is more important than ever. And some people believe that Rancho Mirage residents are not impacted by this. We have thousands of people here who rely on Find Food Bank for their nutritional needs. So I hope you will call in tomorrow. Also, the next slide, please, if you could circle the date for the Jocelyn Center Fashion Show on April the 11th. This is a fundraiser for Rancho Mirage's official senior center. We have more than 2,500 clients. We offer more than 90 programs throughout the year. This year, we will also have probably the most beautiful and most handsome models in the fashion show, because they come from our own. One will be our Community Development Director, Maya Dukic, and our city videographer, Kai Beach. So come and support them and support this worthy cause. Tickets are available at jocelyncenter.org. On April 11th through the 13th, Desert Theatricals will be presenting Hairspray at the amphitheater. It's a great show, and the amphitheater is a great place to see it. Tickets are available at desert-theatricals.com. And finally, I'll talk to you more about this in two weeks, but please circle the date of April 22nd. Our city is going to have a wonderful celebration for Earth Day this year, with festivities that you won't want to miss. I'll tell you more about it at the next council meeting on April 17th, but April 22nd is a day you'll want to save. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Michael. Councilmember Downs, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So last weekend, we had an important golf tournament here in the city of Rancho Mirage. The Gallery Classic Champions Pro Golf Tournament took place on the DynaShore Tournament Course at Mission Hills Country Club, and the gorgeous TV coverage did a great job of highlighting our city as a great destination. Now, the tournament was won by Steve Allen. It was the first tournament that he has won in 23 years, and he wasn't even supposed to play. He was an alternate. He was a fill-in for Steve Stricker, who couldn't play because he had a medical issue. So I think it's a, it's a good lesson about fortitude. Even though you may not have won for years, and even though you're a substitute, you can still win if you show up. So congratulations to Steve Allen. Congratulations to Michelle Delancey and the, and the tournament team. It was a great event, and we were delighted to be there. I've got a couple of other comments I don't want to make, Mr. Mayor, but they relate to items that are on the consent calendar, so I'll wait till the consent calendar is read, and I'll make those comments then.
Thank you. And indeed, it was a great event. Thank you for your comments. Mayor Protam Malato.
As city council members, we all know that we deal with so many issues, and some complex, some very simple, some joyous, some not so much. But one of the joys that we have is when we get a phone call asking if one of us can participate for principal of the day. And last year, I went to the high school, and it was, it was marvelous. And this, this year, I went to Rancho Mirage Elementary, and I had the time of my life sitting with the kindergarteners. And they made me this lovely crown, and they made me promise. I said, "I'll, I'll mention you when I go to the council meeting," and they asked if I would wear it. And so here it is, and I wear it proudly. I had, I had a wonderful day, actually morning, with Dr. Shane Hager, who's the principal of Rancho Mirage Elementary, and I was warmly greeted by all of these children that morning. Such a joy. Little ones, they, they're so innocent, and they're, they're just darling. And I got to read stories. This particular book was, it was titled "The Girl That Never Makes a Mistake." I don't know why they gave me that book. I make lots of mistakes, but I learned a lot reading that book. And I, I must have read it very well, because the, the principal had me read it to three other classes. But I want to thank Rancho Mirage Elementary School for this wonderful honor. I'm, I'm going to frame my crown and put it next to my certificate. It's, it's wonderful when we can take a day and just realize what life's about. They take us back, and, and it's, it's humbling to, to see the joy in these little ones' faces. And I appreciate the invitation to join them that day. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
It is a great experience. I too, or a number of us, have experienced the principal for a day at the various schools. I too have done it at the grammar school, as well as the high school, and to sit in the classroom and participate is just a great pleasure, and it gives you a wonderful, you know, feeling for community. And I'm sure, if I may. I'm sorry, I thought you were through. I apologize. No.
So I am going to have a bone to pick with Shane the next time I see him, because when I was principal for a day, I did not get a crown, and I'm irritated.
I was told I was beautiful. So I'm going to take that comment and run with it.
I'm sure they would not have said that to me.
I too will make one brief comment, if I may, that on March 27th, I had the pleasure of attending the 33rd Annual Senior Inspiration Awards at the Fantasy Springs Resort Casino. This wonderful event was hosted by Riverside County Supervisor Emmanuel Perez and the nine cities of the Coachella Valley, celebrating the invaluable contributions of our senior community members. It was an honor to represent the city of Rancho Mirage and recognize our 2025 honoree, Murray Bryant, who you see on the screen. Murray has been a dear friend for over 40 years, and it was a privilege to celebrate him in front of so many peers and community leaders. As a longtime member of the Rancho Mirage Planning Commission, Murray brought a wealth of experience and deep knowledge in planning and development. Murray's insight, dedication, and steady leadership made a lasting impact on our community, and his legacy continues to influence the city for the better. On behalf of the city of Rancho Mirage, I was proud to present him with this well-deserved recognition. Congratulations again to Murray Bryant and to all the other honorees, who may have made such a difference in their cities and across Riverside County. It's a great annual event. We look forward to it every year, and this was a very special one for us. That concludes our council member comments. I will then go to our city manager and ask him to make any comments that he so desires, and then to go directly into the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No comments today. The council has four items on the consent calendar for consideration. Item number 6A is the approval of the March 6, 2025, regular city council meeting minutes. Item 6B is the receive and file of the 2024 Board and Commission annual reports. Item 6C is the approval of the contracts, and item 6D is the approval of demands. Before we go to council comments or questions, I'll ask the city clerk to take any public comment on the consent calendar.
Thank you. Brad Anderson?
Thank you, Brad Anderson, City Ranch Mirage. I guess we're not speaking on topic four, so I'll skip to the consent item, number six. I wanted to speak on 6A. I don't believe I listed that on my agenda, not that it matters. And item 6C, which is the contracts. First, number 6A was the approval of the minutes of the last meeting of March 6. There's quite a few inconsistencies. Again, I did, I did submit written statements outlining those, and I think it's going to be an ongoing thing. I just want, I guess, notify people, anybody watching this, if you're a public speaker like I am, and I, and I comment about whatever item I'm commenting about, it won't be recorded in the public record, other than your name. Your stance taken, if you're opposed, or a neutral, or independent, or any, any stance you take, maybe a supportiness, whatever the, whatever the topic is, it will not be recorded by the city clerk any longer. The council reports, other people, other speakers, but other than a public speaker, they will not be recorded at all. And, and that's an issue. And that's, I call it censorship, because this is a new project from last year, late last year, and of course, I was opposed to it. I'm going to go to item 6C, contracts. There was quite a few things on there, and I did submit written comments on that. I can't remember the order, because I don't have it, but one was the, I guess, the city. I was going to ask for a staff report, but I don't think I'm going to get anything I asked for today. But there was Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Apparently, the city's going to take on responsibly one of the lieutenant's positions, meaning a paid position, and it's roughly, what was it, 370,000 plus, and, and to the county to secure that position. That's quite an expense, or expense per year. And I think the, other than me, that may look through these, I guess, the agendas and staff reports, nobody's going to know about that. And, and it's a consent item, but it's, you know, nearing 400,000, probably with the automobile, everything that goes along with it, probably will be over that. And I think people in the city should know that. And, and of course, you're going to renew the FLOC system, which is the automatic license plate camera system, without a request for proposals for new contractors. That's an issue. That goes under the wireless plan that you have. I'm going to run out of time, but I think, well, anyway, I'm going to, I'm opposed to that, but definitely look at my comments. Thank you.
That was the only speaker card. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on the consent calendar? That was the only speaker.
Are there any comments of my colleagues?
I do, if I may, Mr. Mayor. So there are two items that I wanted to speak to on the consent calendar. First is item number B, and item B is receipt of annual reports from our various commissions. There are eight commissions that submitted annual reports to us today, and there are 44 members of those commissions. And I think it's important for us to take a moment and to say thank you to those commission members who volunteer their time to make this city a better place to live. And I wanted to take a moment and recognize them by reading the names of those commissioners who serve on the commissions who submitted their reports today. The Community Cultural Commission, Kayla Pressman, Guido Portante, Sally Trademan, Donna Malouf, and Frank Farino. On the Community Emergency Preparedness Commission, Mitch Brown, Caprice Leannan, Ron Stillman, Tanya Hyams, Gary Jones. And on the Community Parks and Trails Commission, Tim Esser, Dennis Constant, who is here in the chamber today, Warren Schneider, Eric Wright, and Nathan Jacrew. On the Historic Preservation Commission, Carol Leibowitz, Frank Lopez, Christian Brown, Craig Trapani, and Kurt Penn. On the Library and Observatory Advisory Commission, Ron Treat, Don Stein, Dom Summa, Louise, Lois Reese. And in memoriam, as Councilmember O'Keefe mentioned a few moments ago, Steve Ezer. Many of us who sit on this dais went to Steve Ezer's memorial service yesterday. Steve was the chairman of the Library and Observatory Advisory Commission over the past year. He was dedicated to the library. He was a great public servant to this city, and Steve, we will miss you. On the Library and Observatory Foundation Board, Rob Moon, Lucy Tagmire, Christine Hughes, Leslie Usau, Patrice Merritt, Peter Samuels, James Soa, Gary Galton, and Mary Willis Yoshioka. On the Planning Commission, Murray Bryant, David Gray, Mark Curran, Pam Chanter, and Jason Agustin. And on our Traffic Safety Commission, Gary Farrell, Michael Siskind, Steve Shuey, Owen McIntosh, and Peter Javier. I think it's appropriate for us to take a moment and say thank you to all of them for their service to our city. Thank you very much to all of them. And again, in memoriam, thank you to Steve Ezer. The last item that I want to talk about is item number six, I'm sorry, C, which is contracts, specifically item five on the contracts that we are approving today, which is the FLOC safety contract. That is a contract renewal for approximately 100 automated license plate readers that are strategically located throughout the city. Now, these cameras do exactly what the name says. They read license plates. If a vehicle has been used and committing a crime, that vehicle can be quickly identified through the ALPR system, and this system is of great value to law enforcement, our law enforcement teams. Our enforcement teams tell us that this is one of the most important tools in their crime-fighting toolbox, and one of the most important jobs of any city council is public safety, and that's exactly what these ALPRs are designed to do. And I am delighted to approve, to cast my vote yes, on the consent calendar today, because this is one of the items that is on that consent calendar, and this is one of the items that helps keep our city safe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Steve. Well, well done. Are there any other council comments regarding the consent calendar? Let's see, no other comments. May I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Consent calendar is approved. We will now go to the public hearings, and the first item is regarding Section 31, the Town Center, the environmental assessment case number EA 24-0012, and that will be presented by Pilar Fleshrude, our senior planner. Pilar, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, members of the city council. I have for your consideration environmental assessment case number EA 24-0012, intended track map case number TTM 24-0004, TTM 38990, a request from MSA Consulting, Inc. The project site lies about 650 feet south of Monterey Avenue and Gerald Ford Drive within the Section 31 specific plan, commonly known as Cotino. Phase one of the Cotino Town Center is underway, with infrastructure, streets, parking, and commercial buildings already approved. Projects include the North Restaurant and Artisan Village, which will offer dining, retail, and office uses. Infrastructure construction continues to support the build-out. This finance and conveyance map will subdivide 72.88 acres into 23 parcels for ownership transfer and financing purposes only. It is intended to facilitate ownership transitions and align with ongoing developments within the Cotino Town Center, ensuring consistency with prior approvals and development conditions. No new construction or vertical development is permitted on the newly-created parcels without separate entitlement approvals. TTM 38990 aligns with previous approvals and consolidates prior lotline adjustments, as well as supports mixed-use parcels, private streets, a lagoon, a public beach, and also simplifies legal descriptions that ensures consistency. As a financing map, it plays a key role in facilitating ongoing development and remains closely tied to previously-approved entitlements and development conditions. The project was reviewed under CEQA and does not introduce new impacts beyond those covered in the certified EIR for the Section 31 specific plan. As such, it is exempt from further review under CEQA Guideline Section 15162. To date, no public comments have been received. The Planning Commission recommended approval on March 13, 2025. Staff recommends that the city council make the motion as shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. Are there any, any public comments?
Thank you. I did not receive any speaker cards on this item. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on 7A? No speakers.
Are there any colleague comments? Are there any colleague comments? I will say this. This is very exciting. I, I maintain that the success of this area is immeasurable, that it is going to be beyond the comprehension of any of us. I think in time, when this is developed, when it's fully in blossom, in blossom, and the commercial activities are alive and running, and you've got restaurants and coffee shops and recreational activities all looking over this magnificent body of water, it is going to be a boom for the city of Rancho Mirage. So I just think it's extremely exciting, and I thank you for being here. I thank the developer for being here, DMB, the architect as well, and I think you both have done a great job, so thank you so much for being here. Before I call for a vote, last minute, are there any other questions?
I just want to thank as well the two folks who are here. Mary Alexander from DMB, thank you for being here today, even though you haven't had an opportunity to speak about this, the good work that you're doing at Cotino, but thank you for being here today. And Paul Di Palatas from MSA Consulting. I think it's important for us to recognize that you are here today with this item on our agenda, so thanks for being here.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I will call for a motion.
I'll make the motion that the city council approve the filing of notice of exemption based on environmental assessment case number EA 24-0012 and pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, Guidelines, Section 15162, subsequent EIRs and negative declarations, and to approve tentative tract map case number TTM 24-004, TTM 38990, subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the staff report.
I am delighted to second anything that has to do with Cotino.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the, the issue is approved. We will go down to next. Item 7B is the extension of time, case number ET 25-002, and the applicant is Bravo Holdings. And again, this will be presented by Pilar, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. I have for your consideration an extension of time for tentative tract map TTM 22-0002, TTM 38222, a residential subdivision request from Bravo Properties. The 10-acre site is located along the east side of Vista del Sol, just east of Eisenhower Medical Center and west of Vista Dunes Road. The city council previously approved this eight-lot gated subdivision on May 18, 2023. The 10-acre site includes a cul-de-sac street, retention basin, and a landscaped parkway along Vista del Sol with access from Bravo Dreams Lane. Entry features include a white block wall, slate gray accent columns, and an automatic metal gate. The project exceeds landscape requirements, featuring a 17-foot-wide parkway with date palms, fruitless olives, and desert adaptive plants, along with desert rocks that add a low-water use design that enhance the overall streetscape. The applicant is requesting a one-year extension, the first of up to three allowed, due to delays in securing approvals from the Coachella Valley Water District. If approved, the new expiration date would be May 18, 2026. As part of this extension request, several conditions of approval have been updated. Conditions nine and 10 have been removed since these items are now complete. Condition four has been revised to reflect the new expiration date of May 18, 2026. A new condition, 17A, has been added, stating the grading permits may not be issued prior to vertical development entitlements unless approved by the Public Works or Development Services Director. The project remains consistent with the original SEQA determination. No new environmental impacts have been identified that would require further review. To date, we have not received any public comments. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the extension on March 13, 2025. Staff recommends that the city council make the motion as shown on the screen. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicant's representative are available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pilar. Are there any public comments?
I did not receive any speaker cards. Is there anyone that would like to speak on item 7B? No speakers.
Thank you. Do any of my colleagues have any comments regarding this item?
I do, Mr. Mayor. I guess it doesn't surprise me that we see a delay in a project having to do with the CVWD. So, Pilar, can you tell us any of the specifics about what the delay is about?
Yeah, so the applicant has shared with us that their team has submitted some items to CVWD, but due to their review timelines, they're not quite going to make it to the May 18 expiration date, so they're requesting this one-year extension to have a better understanding of it.
Okay, so at the moment, it simply has to do with the timeframe in which CVWD can, can make their approval. At least as far as we know today, the CVWD is not asking for any additional infrastructure to be built in order for this project to move forward?
There, there is infrastructure that's going to be built out, a part of Vista del Sol where this project is going. They're going to have to extend, I believe, the sewer and water lines. The, the project's representative would be better able to answer those, but there is some infrastructure that's going to be extended.
Okay. I'd like to hear from, from the, the project. Tell us what this is issue, tell us a little, a little more about this issue with the CVWD and why you're delayed because of them.
Hi, my name is Dusty Knapp, and I am the consultant for this project. We have delays from CVWD for hydraulic modeling that we need to do for engineering. It's taken them four months just for them to go out and do a hydraulic study for us because they are so backed up. So, so that puts us into our engineering firm. So our engineering firm is working on the plans now for sewer and water that is going on site. Thank you for, to you for putting in the sewer. But anyways, now we are working on plans for Plan Check, and we are, we are being told it's at least, once we submit to them, there's four to six months out before they can get us a, even our first comments. So that's where we're at.
Four to six months out. Sounds like you might be here a year from now asking for another extension.
I hope not, but yes, my client is.
All right, well, thanks for coming today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, Dusty, this is an issue that is not new to either you or us on a number of projects. There is this, unfortunately, backlog at the CVWD. Any other comments by any colleagues of any kind? See, no other comments. I'll call for a motion.
I'll make the motion. I move that we extend, that we grant the approval of a one-year extension of time, ET 25-002, for tentative tract map case number TTM 22-002, TTM 38222. It's a lot of twos. Subject to the conditions of approval and based on the content and findings in the attached staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
And the motion is approved. We will prepare to go into a recess for closed session. Before that, I'll ask our council to review, review any items on the agenda.
Would you have a request to speak on the closed session? So Brad, would you, are you still here?
I think he left.
Seeing that he left, I guess that we can move forward.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll be convening in a closed session for the item before you, listed as 8A, conference with legal counsel, potential initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D4, one potential case.
Thank you. We are now in recess. Okay, we are back in session. I will ask the city attorney to review any of the items that were covered in closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. No reportable action taken today.
This, the meeting is now concluded, and we are adjourned.